Chris, thank you for showing up.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Thank you so much.
Yeah, being part of this. Well, I'd like to, with your permission, to start just with introductions because I know you don't know everybody. And I'll start with myself. I'm Bill Gothier, the Chair. Been a longtime Exeter resident, care deeply for the school. I've had two kids go through it, certainly one in it right now. What's that?
Almost a third.
Yes, yes. So I'm happy to be part of the board. It's a great team we have. We've done a lot of great things. The school district is strong. The budget delivery session went really well for us. So we're very supportive in the school district. So it's a good place to be.
That's great.
So if you guys don't mind, just give a quick introduction of yourselves and we'll go from there.
Amy Ransome, I'm from New Fields. This is my first year on the board, but I used to work here in SAU 16 as a business administrator, and I currently work in Oyster River as a business administrator.
No kidding. Nice to meet you, Amy.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Erin Garcia de Paredes. I live in Stratum. This is my second year on this board. I did three years on the Stratum Board previous to this. I have two kids in the building and I have two more on their way.
Hello again. I'm Dawn Bullins. I'm the Exeter rep for the cooperative board. This is my second year as well, I think. Yeah, same as you. I was on the Exeter Elementary School Board for many years before that. I don't know. A long time between PTO and school board. And I currently have a senior here at EHS and one that graduated two years ago.
Nice to see you again, Dawn.
Nice to see you too.
Hello, I'm Bob Hall. I'm a native of Exeter. So I'm a graduate of Exeter High School. I taught at Exeter High School for 35 years. And I'm on the school board, and this is my last meeting of--
This is your last meeting?
Yes.
Well, congratulations, Bob.
I'm stepping aside. Giving somebody else an opportunity.
Going back to teaching?
Not a bad idea.
There's plenty of things to do.
That's a good answer, yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you, Bob.
Great. Thank you, everyone. So do you want to do a quick little introduction? Tell us about yourself?
Yeah, so I, my name's Chris Tebow. I'm very excited by the prospect of joining the community and being the principal of Exeter High School. I've been a high school administrator for almost a decade. The last six years, I've been the principal at Somersworth High School. In that time, I've had many, many opportunities to be involved in exciting, challenging, and transformative work. From competency-based education to MTSS, to post-COVID efforts to do more to support student mental health. Through these, I've learned a lot. I've worked with amazing people, and I've been committed to finding creative solutions to complex problems. Most importantly, I've learned that success as an administrator is not defined by a policy, a procedure, a rule, or an expectation. Education is above all about the people, and I believe very strongly in the concept of servant leadership. My role is to make sure that the people around me have the tools, the resources, and the support to be successful. My primary goal is to build positive relationships, to establish a foundation of trust, and through hard work, humility, and a shared vision, invest in the students, staff, and community at Exeter High School. I am a firm believer that the culture of a building, more than any single initiative or benchmark, is what creates the conditions for school improvement. People who feel trusted and supported, and who have the opportunities for authentic voice, will invest in the long-term success of the community, and results will follow. I want to share a little bit about myself. I think that's important. I was born and raised in Rochester and have spent most of my life in the Seacoast area. I went to college at St. Hades in Manchester and started my teaching career in social studies. I don't know if you were a social studies teacher, Bob? You were a social--
Originally.
Oh, no kidding? So I started there at Spalding. I met my wife there. She taught English, and I thought she was the best teacher that I'd ever seen. And I tell her, and everyone will listen. That's why I fell in love with her. She still teaches English, and we live in Barrington with our two boys. A lifelong resident of the Seacoast, I've always heard amazing things about this community. I've worked with several Exeter staff members, both past and present, who speak highly of the students, the districts, and the support that this community gives to its schools. The interview process has been very, very affirming. The Exeter School District is staffed by talented and dedicated professionals, and comprised of a student body that is invested in making their schools an excellent place to learn, work, and be. And to be honest with you, I think that's rare nowadays. This is where I want to be. It's a community that invests in its people, provides incredible opportunities for students and staff, and is forward-thinking in its approach to school improvement. I would relish the chance to be part of the incredible team and would approach the position with energy, with enthusiasm, and a commitment to the long-term success of Exeter High School. At this point, I have been a part of public high schools for most of my life. There's no place that I'd rather be. I love the excitement. I love the energy and the possibility that's inherent in the environment. I believe that I have a lot to offer, and my skill set, my backgrounds, my talents, my belief structure makes me an excellent fit for this position. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I look forward to answering your questions.
Chris, thank you for that introduction. I totally appreciate that because hearing that in your voice is so reaffirming, and it's better than reading just a resume.
Thank you, Bill.
So I appreciate you saying all that.
Appreciate that.
Yeah. And I hope that this is informal. We can just have a discussion. We do have questions for you, and I look forward to getting to know you more. And I get to get the first question. Wow, so nice. What's that?
You may have already answered it.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. And I did ask you for an introduction, so my, you know, my first question is, please tell me about yourself, what you have.
Okay.
But maybe what I, I'd like to hear a little bit more about your interest in being the principal of Exeter High--
Yeah, yeah.
I think you did a great job outlining all your passions, but I'd like to hear how that matches that.
For me, Bill, I'm at a point in my career where being a part of a team is probably the most important thing. I've been an administrator in a few schools, mostly smaller schools, which has many benefits. One of the maybe drawbacks is there are fewer resources, fewer people, and an administrator, a principal of a smaller school tends to be directly involved, sometimes directly responsible for pretty much everything. One of the things that's really stood out about the process here in Exeter, and I have had my own in this community for a long time, the people that work here. I would be thrilled to be able to work directly with a strong team in everything from curriculum to special ed to multi-tiered support systems. I don't have all the answers always, or maybe even most of the time, but I listen really well. I am inspired by public education. I am excited about the possibility of learning and growing in a new community, and to be surrounded by capable, caring, and dedicated professionals, really be part of that larger team. Thank you.
Great, thanks. I'm going to ask my team members to ask--
I have this question. Chris, what strategies would you implement to build a positive and inclusive school culture that engages both students and staff?
Yeah, so, thank you. And I wanted to specifically address that in my introduction. I genuinely believe that that is the most important, first, and fundamental thing, responsibility of a building administrator, of a principal. If you can't build a culture of trust, of shared ownership, of investment in the community, you just, you can't be successful. One thing I've learned in multiple places, different communities have different characteristics, different needs, they're made up of different values, but people tend to be the same. What do people need? They need to be heard. They need to be listened to. They need to be cared for and supported, whether that's a student, whether that's a staff member, or an administrator. I genuinely, I put people first. I try and be transparent, open, and honest. And I think doing that right, getting the people part of it right, gives administrators, gives principals, the opportunity to do everything else really, really well. Whatever the framework is, whatever we're trying to accomplish, if we can all start from a foundation of trust, of shared investment, and acknowledging that we're all on the same page and all on the same team, we can really make big changes and we can move the school forward. Thank you.
I have to take this question--
Okay.
--Melissa isn't able to make it. So Chris, how do you measure the effectiveness of the school's academic programs, and how do you use data to inform decision-making?
Yeah, so I'm very familiar with a multi-tiered structure. I come from schools that have worked in MTSS-A, the academics, and MTSS-B behavioral. In an academic structure, determining as a team what those benchmarks are, what those criteria are, are very, very important, right? So what data points are we going to look at regularly, monthly, annually, even weekly, determine how we're doing as a school? There are some that are pretty consistent in high schools, like SAT data, others that might be dependent on what testing structure we use. You can also use classroom academic data. Really, the most important part is providing authentic time during the day for stakeholders to get together and look at that data together. I think we can do a great job collecting these things. We can do a great job outlining how we're going to measure our success and what criteria we use. But if we don't build in strong time for the professionals at the classroom level and at the administrative level to evaluate, to reflect, and to focus on that, we cannot set and be successful in maintaining and creating, establishing short and long-term goals. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next one is for me. Can you share a time when you made a difficult decision that was unpopular with some stakeholders, staff, parents, et cetera? How did you manage the situation and ensure that the decision aligned with the best interests of the students?
Yeah. So as a building principal, and a high school building principal for six years, I have made many, many, many difficult decisions. My first year as a principal was during COVID. And that was a wake-up call. That was a learning experience. I got an education very quickly in what it meant to work with people, to be creative, to problem solve. I think in every decision I make, I do my very best to keep the kids at the center of that. So the example I'm going to use, I had a student, this was last week actually, who wanted to TA a class. And she didn't meet the necessary qualifications to TA this class, but this was something that she was excited about. She wanted to do it. It would have been good for her. So I met with the teacher. I met with the department. I met with the girl and the parents individually and separately, and talked about how we could be creative in helping her to realize this goal and to TA this class. And because we have a very specific process in place, not everyone was happy with the decision to allow her to do this. But at the end of the day, I do my very best to be proactive in my communication, to be clear, not just on what decision I'm making, but the why behind that decision. When we talk about the decision-making process, that why is so very, very important. I'm going to make 100 decisions every single day, and the most important thing that I can do is to communicate to staff members exactly why I've made that decision. And I don't take sort of bending or breaking rules lightly. I think that it's really important to have solid and strong procedures, policies, expectations. And I do my very best to communicate and maintain those. But at the end of the day, whatever decision it is, whether it's something big like navigating COVID, or maybe something like giving a student an opportunity that maybe they wouldn't have otherwise because it makes sense for the kid, I'm going to do my very best to balance what's in the best interest of the school with what's in the best interest of the broader community and put a lot of weight into the individual student. Thank you, Dawn.
Okay, welcome. Thank you.
I have the next question. What strategies would you use to ensure that students who are high-achieving academically are adequately challenged while also supporting students who may be struggling academically?
That's a great question. So I'm a firm believer in rigor. I think rigor in a classroom environment is so very important. This is an opportunity in students' lives for them to engage in things that are hard, to do things that are difficult with supports that are already in place. This is particularly true for our high-achieving students. A lot of them have had things come easy to them for a lot of their life. And some of them get to high school and things stay easy, but sometimes it gets really, really hard. And this is what I tell parents, and I tell kids this all the time. Hard is okay. Hard is good. Appropriately hard helps us get better. We have to step outside of our comfort zones to improve. Now, if there's a situation where students are genuinely struggling, are they appropriately placed? Are the necessary supports in place? But we want all the time to challenge our students appropriately in classes, on athletic fields, in extracurriculars. For students that are struggling, it is about building in intentional interventions and supports at all levels. In a multi-tiered structure, you could have kids who are connected with several different interventions, and the most important thing is to provide a continuum to make sure that the resources you have are connected with the kids who need them, and maybe more importantly, that there is an intentional process to be proactive about what that means. If a kid's struggling in math class, what's the next step? If a kid's excelling and doing great, are they appropriately placed? Is there something different that they need to do? And making sure that we are intentional about what that framework looks like is, I think, one of the most important systems that we can have in place. Thank you.
And it's my turn. After three years in a job, what would success look like for you?
That's such a good question, Bob. So three years in a job, what would success look like for me? I think I would measure that most strongly by the way the people in the community view me, by the relationships that I have built, and by the students who have left, my connections with them. I think there are a lot of things that I would love to do. Frameworks and curriculum work, and all different things that are important in high schools, all different kinds of goals. But the most important thing at the end of the day are the people that are here. And after three years, if I could develop strong relationships and connections with the students, with the teaching staff, with the administrators, so that when we go to do the real work, there's a foundation of trust, there's a shared understanding that we all want what's best, and a recognition that we're all human. We all make mistakes, but we're all here for the kids. That would be the very definition of success for me, Bob. Thank you.
So I have a question for you. What have you learned about Exeter High School during the interview process, the excitement of the job?
Can I say this? The students here are incredible. They're incredible. I had heard about the students-- by the tour, by the meetings I had with kids, by their advocacy, by their level of investment. I said in my intro, it's not something you see all the time. Students these days are pulled in so many different directions. Social media has made their world so much more complex. The students that I met in Exeter, and I know I met a very small sample size, but the students I met in Exeter, they cared about this community. To go back to your question, why here, Bill? When I left every single, from the first interview with the student we had in that group to the very last time I was here, when I left these interviews, when I left the time here, the kids stuck with me. And if I can kind of, you know, nail down one reason why I would be so excited to be part of this community, it would be to work directly with the kids of Somersworth. It's so interesting. I had some meetings with the teachers, and they said the kids thanked them when they leave the room after giving a lesson. Kids are vocal, strong advocates for the things that they want, and my job is to get behind them, coach them, lead them, support them, and help them. More than anything, Bob, I think that's what I've learned.
That's great. Yeah. All right, so we have a bunch of questions. We've gone through the questions. Thank you for all your answers. I have some more questions, but I'd open up to anybody else that wants to ask a question. And we have someone, Timmy here. Bob, go ahead.
The difference between Somersworth and Exeter is significant.
Significant, yeah.
What we're looking at. You have, what, 350 students?
Yeah, about 400, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A thousand.
Yes, over that, I think, yeah.
Yeah. How do you feel about that?
Yeah.
You've got many more parents, many more staff members, and many more students.
I recognize, above all, like going into this, Bob, I recognize that, I recognize that as a challenge, and I would be excited to take that on. I think I'm at a point in my career now where I have spent, you know, nine years as a high school building administrator, six years as a high school principal, and I've had a lot of success in those areas. It is a larger school. It's a more complex school, 100%. You can't discount that. I do think that there are a lot of the same structures in a high school, small school or big school. Responsibilities are the same. The laws are applied in the same ways. A lot of the same extracurriculars and athletics. Public high school is in some ways public high school, and in a small school, as a building principal, I am directly and immediately involved in pretty much everything. Like I said, part of the reason I would be so excited to take on the challenge of a larger school is the opportunity to work with a larger team of people, of dedicated professionals in their areas. I've never been in a building with a curriculum coordinator. I've done a lot of curriculum coordination on my own, and the ability to, I don't have all the answers, but the ability to work proactively with a team of people who are in the same school, working with the same kids, is something that's really exciting to me, Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So imagine that it is graduation day at your current school, Somersworth.
Yeah.
And the seniors have been challenged to tell a story about you, not who you are, but just tell a story about the last four years they learned. And they, you know, they have to get the parents laughing, get the parents. What do they say about you, the principal?
So they're going to talk about my squeaky cart.
Oh, this isn't, okay, good.
Yeah, they're going to talk about my squeaky cart. So I make it a priority at Somersworth, Belmont, Rochester, I make it a priority to be visible. I don't think that a building administrator can do this job really well from an office all the time. I do understand moving from a small school to a big school, there are going to be a lot of considerations, and I believe that I navigate those things very well. But in general, my heart is going to be out in the hallways. In Somersworth, I have a, over the last couple years, I have a cart. I work off a cart. We decorate the cart for the hallways, for the holidays, excuse me. And I put it together myself. I've gotten feedback on how well I put it together. And so it squeaks all the way down the hallway. I think if a student was talking at graduation and wanted to tell a funny story about me, they would talk about me rolling down the cart. They'd talk about the time that I hit a bump and my laptop went flying, or the time they came around the corner and my coffee was all over my shirt. That whole process, it's been a work in process using that. But, you know, I think that speaks to something deeper. I try and inject energy, enthusiasm, joy, and fun into the building, and I think that the only way I can do that is by dressing up on dress-up days, by being a part of the culture, by taking ownership of all the fun, crazy, chaotic things that happen. I think a lot of those things are reflected in the way students respond to me in the hallways, the relationship that I've been able to build. I mean, even in the senior pranks. A couple years ago, they put my car up on Craigslist, which was one of the best. I don't know if it was Craigslist. It might not have been Craigslist, but that was one of the best pranks because I, you know, you get calls from people like, hey, you selling your car? Like, what are you talking about? I'm not selling my car. And I didn't find out for, yeah, it took me, it took me a little while. But those kinds of things, right? I do not take myself too seriously, Bob. I don't know how you can working in this world. I try and be humble. If they want to take a video of me or do something good, let's do it. I'm all in. I do draw the line at tights. I've told people this before. No, I will dress up. I will not wear tights. I made that mistake one time, and one time was enough.
So we won't ask you about that?
Yeah.
That sounds personal, but, but putting your, putting the car on Craigslist, did someone confess to doing it?
Uh, yeah, well, not during the school year. This was, this is probably seven or eight years ago now. So I didn't find out until the next year. I think it was a sibling or something. Like, oh, yeah, that was my brother or sister. Yeah. It was a good one. Yeah.
That is a good one.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah. I hope I didn't just give the, once was enough for that one too, Bill.
So you don't want that to happen again?
No, I don't even know if kids use--
That's off the table, Exeter.
Off the table. It'd probably be on Facebook Marketplace now. I think that's what the kids are using.
I'm just looking at our, Timmy, okay, she's good. Well, this has been great to get to know you. I've taken some good notes. I love your energy. I love that you put yourself out there again to be part of this whole journey for Exeter High School. I know that we all appreciate the energy that goes into it, and also the, I'm sure there's a lot of thinking, contemplation, and we're glad you're here.
Yeah. Thank you, Bill. Thank you so much.
I'll turn over. Do you want to say anything about next steps, or?
I can do that as we walk out, if you'd like.
Very good. All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah. You know, I think through this interview process, I have learned a great deal about this community. And everything that I've learned has made me really excited about the process of joining it. From the district leadership team, honestly, to tonight here, and the way that you approach these meetings, this process, this job, this seems like a fantastic place to be a part of. And I'm looking for a place to invest in long-term. Like I said, I'm at a point in my career where the environment is so important to me, the team is so important to me, and I believe this would be a good fit. So thank you for everything. Thank you, Heather, for the process. I really appreciate it. Yeah, that's all. Have a good evening.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Good night.
So Eric, if you're still listening, you said you would mute the mics?
I'm muted now.
Okay. I think so. I appreciate it.
All right. Tanya, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks. How are you?
Good, good. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, actually, there's a lot of action going on. I pulled in, I was thinking, what are the things happening right now?
We're all here for the interview.
Yeah, my heart, right?
What's happening?
I know. Yeah, what's happening? Is everybody here on?
We draw our crowd.
I saw a line going on there.
We draw our crowd, there's no doubt.
Well, thank you.
Well, thanks for being here and early. Appreciate, appreciate it, yes. My name is Bill Gothier. I'm the chair of the board, and I think you just missed, I have three kids that went through the school system, one's still here. I think you just missed them at Main Street. You came as my last one, I think, was leaving, so. But glad to have you here. I've been in the community for 25 years now, so long term, Exeter resident. I love it. It's a great community. You know it. You've been here for a little while, and Exeter High School's been really great, and CMS has been wonderful, too, so we appreciate all of that. So we'll start, if you don't mind, we'll start with just kind of an induction to everyone, and we'll get going from there.
That'd be great.
Hi, I'm Amy Ransom. I am the Newfield rep on the co-op board. I live in Newfield. I have two boys at Exeter High School. I was the business administrator here about eight years ago, and I'm a current business administrator in Oyster River.
Oh, wow, that's awesome. Hi.
Hi, Tanya. I'm Erin Garcia de Prides, stratum rep on the board. I have two kids at SMS, two kids at EHS. I was on the stratum board for three years, and this is my second of three years.
I'm a stratum resident.
I know you are.
Thanks for your honor. Nice to meet you.
Hi, Tanya, and we know each other for many years.
Nice to see you.
Hi, Tanya. I'm Bob Hall. I represent the town of Kensington on the co-op board. I'm a native of Exeter. I graduated Exeter High School.
Wow, what year?
66.
Wow, that's awesome.
Long time before. And I taught at Exeter High School.
Oh, my goodness.
I taught for 35 years at Exeter High School.
What what subject area?
I was a special educator.
Good for you.
Absolutely.
That's wonderful.
My best, the best job I could ever have.
Oh, that's great. Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
We're going to hire you again. This is going to happen now.
I know.
I know, I'm feeling like, yeah, you're coming back. Yes, and then we have one person on Zoom.
Okay.
Tammy, would, yeah, I don't know if you can speak up or?
Hi.
Hi.
Tammy Dunst. I'm the stratum, one of the stratum reps for the co-op, and I have two girls, but they're both out of the school district. My youngest graduated in 2023.
Okay, nice to meet you.
You, too.
Great. And do you want to introduce yourself to us and?
Well, sure. So I am Tanya Nevee. I'm the principal of Main Street School in Exeter, which is a wonderful school, and I feel really like blessed and fortunate to already be serving in a capacity in this town that is amazing. So it's, it's actually been like, I think, my favorite job in education. It's been pretty awesome. I grew up in Washington State, and then I moved to Arizona and lived there for 20 years, and that's where I did my teaching and started my administrative experience. And then I have three children, a daughter that's a freshman here and a son that's a seventh grader at CMS. And then I also have a daughter that's about to be 22. And so her, our COVID years were her junior and senior year of high school. And so when she graduated high school, we just felt like we wanted to change. We just kind of had an itch and thought we should do that before the two younger kids start getting into middle school. And so we just kind of started exploring areas and then saw the position in Exeter and decided to throw my name in and then got that job. It was awesome, and so we moved our family across the country, and so here we are. And it is really neat to have that different experience for my family and to work and live in the same community that is not necessarily an experience on kind of like a small town feeling that I had in Phoenix. And so it's just like a unique, lovely experience, and so I really enjoy being here. I spent 10 years in the classroom. I was an English teacher, a high school English teacher. I taught freshmen, sophomores, and juniors mostly in a range of courses. So I I taught everything from general English to EOSOL honors remediation, credit recovery. I did some avid cohorts. I helped run some electives. I did ACT prep, and then I also co-taught special education with some wonderful special educators. And so through some of those experiences, I always thought that I would be in the classroom. And then I had some mentors that started pushing me to do some other things, and so I became an instructional coach for English. Our districts in Arizona are much larger, so we had seven high schools, and then each one of those high schools has about six elementary schools that feed into them. And so I was an instructional coach and traveled to those high schools to help do some assisting on just best practices and working on curriculum and assessment and doing those sorts of things. And I really liked it. And then I had an administrator that started nudging me into maybe pursuing getting my administrative degree. So I did that. And then I, my first administrative job, my, one of my mentors called and said that there is a school that was really having a lot of challenges, keeping administrators and teachers at that school. It was just a very challenging school, and it happened to be one of the feeder schools at the high school that I taught at, so I knew that population very well. And he said, I don't have anything at the high school open right now, but would you be interested in going there and helping out that school? And I said, sure. So that's, that was my entry into elementary school. It was a pre-K 8. And so the other administrator that I worked with, sure, her experience was with younger children in primary grades, and so I oversaw grades 5, 8, and then she oversaw the younger children. And then when the position opened in Exeter, I was a little bit, I I don't, I thought, I'm going to have to grow a lot because I don't know a lot about foundational skills, but that's an interesting challenge because I can teach kids to analyze literature and do all this other stuff, but I don't know about foundational skills. And I've learned so much there. And so now I'm like, to be able to have that experience of a pre-K 12 system and have done a lot of professional development, a lot of systems work, a lot of building multi-tiered systems of support, PLCs for professional learning communities, like I've done a lot of that on district-wide scales and through a pre-K 12 experience. So it's just kind of like a unique window to be able to look into. But that's kind of how I find myself here. Going back to my teaching experience, I always thought that I would work, I would stay in a high school. I love being at a high school. And so just how different doors opened, you know, I took them and presented new challenges and thought, oh, I could learn and grow there. But then when I saw the high schools open, that's kind of where my heart is. I like being with secondary kids, like all the things that happen at a high school. And so it was just, you know, I I thought I have to go for that because that's where kind of my heart is and my experience is, and where I spent most of my years.
Good. Here's just some of my first questions.
Okay.
But I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
I'll start off really easy.
Okay.
Do you know Rob Gronkowski?
Do I know who?
Rob Gronkowski? The football player?
Oh, Gronk?
Gronk. Gronk, I should have just said Gronk, right? Is that how people?
Although I will say, I'm from Washington State, so I'm a Seahawks fan.
Oh, my goodness.
I know, but I have converted, and I really do like watching the Red Sox.
Okay, good, all right, recover.
Okay.
But I really appreciate you telling me all about yourself, and that is really good. And you started to talk about like, why, why the high school? I I know you taught, taught high school, but I mean, that's a, you know, going from elementary to high school, not that it's a big leap, but it's it's a change in.
It's a change.
Yeah.
It's different.
Why that change?
I mean, I think that's what excites me about the position. Even when I, when I was in the classroom, I ran all the things. I was student counselor, I did yearbook advisor, I oversaw a bunch of clubs. We did, I extended field trips and overnight camping experience with kids. Like, there's something about the age group where you're thinking, you you get to experience like their last four years of childhood that is so uniquely cool. And just thinking about what you get to create in the experiences, there's like quintessential high school things that should happen, and to be a part of that and work with kids who can articulate what their vision is of high school. Like, I I do lots of fun things with our, with our younger children, but it's different than co-creating plans with them and coming in and being like, what is it that you want? What are you expecting? How can you participate? How can I help you? Like, to be able to do that with kids, it's just at a different level when you're in a secondary world. I clearly, I love English content, that's what I taught. So I think that's, it's interesting to work with people who are very passionate about a content area, and I really love delivery and instruction, and I and I kind of can nerd out with curriculum instruction and assessment. And so I can, like, that goes across content areas. So I can watch people be experts in their field, and then we can work together to hone craft, to be really excellent and provide good learning experiences for kids. So everything about that is is fun, between the the athletics and the clubs and the learning experiences and spending like their last childhood years with them and figuring out what it is that you want to do, how can I support that? And envisioning what this place can be alongside kids is is just kind of a unique opportunity.
Thank you.
Tanya, I'm up next.
Okay.
What strategies would you, you were done, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
What strategies would you implement to build a positive and inclusive school culture that engages both students and staff?
You said a positive and an inclusive one. I think that there, you have to provide people the room to exchange ideas with you. There's a lot of very smart people in the building, including kids. And so it's being open to hearing, what is your needs? What is your wish? How can I support you? As an administrator, you're trying to find the time and the resources to make things happen. And so like, the the whole vision of feeling like everybody in the building, I know we say that you belong here, but it's true, like, this is their school. This is the kid's school. You have educators who have been in the building for a long time or residents in the community for a long time. Like, there's a lot of investment and a lot of stake in what happens at the schools. They're the hubs of the community. And so everybody deserves to come to the school and feel like they have a voice, that they're seen, that their opinion matters. Collectively, I think we can agree, even if sometimes we have a difference of opinion, that what we want is for all of our kids to have the best learning experience they can have. And so there's common ground already in that and figuring out where maybe some of the gaps are, because there are some. We're always in a constant cycle of improvement. I think you have to be transparent and honest about that and really look at what it is, maybe confronting that. Sometimes when you're thinking about inclusion, it's looking at systems, and we build systems. Sometimes the systems have problems in them. And so being willing to look at that, like, what are our policies? What are our procedures? Do they protect everyone? Do students and families know what their rights are? And are we making sure that we're meeting them? Because there is an expectation that when they come here, that they, all students should have the opportunity to take whatever pathway they want to, and that we are trying to encourage students to do so. And so there's, when you're feeling like you belong and that there's inclusion, there's so many facets of that, between the building being in good condition, feeling safe, people being proud of their school, people wanting to be involved in clubs and activities. There's, being at the high school, it's kind of like, through the middle school, kids start to explore interests, and then I think in high school, you can kind of find your people, or maybe lots of different groups of people and what your kind of niche is. And so it's helping kids to explore what those possibilities are and linking people up. And with adults, you know, I I've said it a lot with our staff, kids come and go, and you make good connections with students, and some stay with you forever, you stay in contact with them, but you're working with these adults for five, 10, 15, 20 years beyond. And so it's very important for that to happen, too, that it's like, we have to enjoy working together and that we are creating really cool things for kids in the community because we we live with each other day in and day out. We see each other more than we see our families sometimes. And so there has to be something special that brings us together. And there's a lot of good research on when educators believe that they are collectively doing something together, that that's when, the belief that we can do that is what shifts student achievement. It's, there's a collective responsibility and belief that what we are doing matters and that we can make a difference. And just that mindset of that, that we can do. And just that mindset of that we can do that, then it is felt and seen through test scores and other things. I mean, it has like a really positive impact. So thinking about that climate and culture and everybody that's in the system and how they're benefiting from it is really important.
Thank you.
That was wordy, I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm sorry. I was listening and forgot. I didn't take any notes. Melissa's not here, so I'm asking her a question.
Okay.
Tanya, how do you measure the effectiveness of the school's academic programs? And how do you use data to inform decision-making?
Well, the data piece, I think, is really important. And data looks like a lot of different things. So you can't just take one data point and have it the end-all, be-all. Like, when you're looking at a multi-tiered system of support, you're looking at tier one, meaning that 100% of students are getting their grade-level content. So take it, English, math, what have you. In order to know that your programming is successful, you should have about 90% of students who are finding success with that first go of just high-quality, good instruction. The only way to do that is that you have some built-in assessments, and they can be something that is formative, it can be something that is summative, but you have to be collecting data. And research-wise, it really is like those teacher-developed, quick, formative assessments. Like, I taught a thing, I give it to the students, they have it, they don't have it, maybe I need to try it in a different way. And then you quickly shift so that you can be responsive and address their needs. That's just like one type of data, but it has to happen pretty regularly. It needs to be consistent. It's great when actually, like, the whole grade level in that content area can give the same one because there's built-in professional development opportunities of saying, "How did you get those scores? You must be doing something because you're crushing it, and I need to learn from you." There's so many good uses of just that first go of tier-one data. On top of that, we have universal assessments. And so those could be a bunch of different indicators, screeners. You have I Ready, you have state assessment, you have ACT, you have whatever they are. Some of those, it's really good data, but you have to look at it from a lens of saying that it might just be a one-and-done. A kid maybe had a really good day and did well on this assessment, or maybe they didn't. That's why all of the other pieces of data that you would include are really important. Then you can also look at other things. You look at behavior, you look at attendance, you look at SEL screeners, you can look at involvements in clubs and sports and all of that. And then you get like a whole picture of what a kid is doing and how successful they are in your system. And then I think that it's important to start even breaking that data down further to see if we are missing any groups. So you might say, "Okay, you know, we're looking at this profile of a student. Okay, now we know that English may be not their first language, so let's look at that. Is there something that maybe we're missing? Is there another layer of support that we could be offering so that they can have some success there?" So when you are taking lots of data points and then you are starting to narrow it down to figure out what is the true profile of the student and how can we intervene to make sure that they have every level of support that they need to be successful, like, that is the use of data. And it takes a lot of training to get people to feel comfortable with it, comfortable sharing their data, looking at what it really means. In addition to, you have highly skilled professionals here who are seeing students on a regular basis and knowing that their experiences, their interactions, their conversations with students are just as important as some of those data measures that come through. And so you have to have frequent conversations with each other to figure out what is going on student by student and what areas they need maybe some extra support in. Yeah, there was another one. Data and what was the other piece?
How do you measure the effectiveness of the school's academic programs?
I think there's lots of ways that you measure success, but I think it's kids being excited about courses and feeling like they are, when you have a conversation with them, that they love what's happening in their class, they're excited about what they're learning about, that they're having good relationships with their teachers. Actually, in the rounds that we were in on Friday, there were some questions about programming and courses and refining some of the courses. And the kids have a lot of really good ideas about things that they would like to learn and areas that could be tweaked. That was pretty exciting. But I think that is success, too, not just the data that comes out, although our number one obligation as a learning institution is to make sure that we have high academics and that there's high achievement. Like, that's always there as well. That's our end goal. But that can be measured by a lot of different means.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm up next. Can you share a time when you made a difficult decision that was unpopular with some stakeholders, staff, parents, et cetera? And how did you manage the situation and ensure that the decision aligned with the best interest of the students?
I'll be fully transparent. I'm in one now, so that's probably why that's on the mind. And I think, like, we're still playing it out, to be honest. So we met as, we have an equity team, and we get together and we do a lot of assessments at our schools to figure out what's going on and areas that we could improve. And so one of the things that we talked about were our holidays and our celebrations and what we choose to center and focus on and what students might be left out of some of that picture. So we had the conversation. We actually went through, we had a good number of our staff that attended a professional development, and there was an article and a rubric that said, "You can pick any holiday or celebration and come through it, and there's a series of questions. Who does it center? Who might it leave out? Are there tweaks that you could make to the system that make it more inclusive for all students?" So we said, "Okay, let's take it to the staff and see what we think." So this is right when we came back from break, so I'm thinking it was like our first staff meeting in January. So we come through, and our staff says, "Why don't we look at Valentine's Day?" That's the next one that's really coming up big. Okay. So we go through it, and we came up with a plan, and we realized that there are some barriers, and that was going through the rubric. There are some socioeconomic barriers that we have with our students. There are religious and cultural barriers. We had our ESOL teacher that shared that we did have some students that chose not to come to school, their family chose not to send their kids because of their own family's implications of feeling like it was romanticized and some other things. And then our green team talked about just like some waste and other things that can come with, like, you get all these little tchotchkes and things, and then they get tossed. There were concerns about allergies. We have a lot of students that have allergies. It was all this stuff, right? So we decide what we're going to do is, let's put it out to the community that this year we're going to take on Valentine's Day and make it something inclusive. We're going to do letter exchanges, we'll do community and friendship activities, we'll do swaps within the classroom with school materials. So I sent a pull-out to my staff. Is everybody on board? This is the plan. Our staff said, "Yes, we're ready to give it a go." It was a mixed bag of results when it went out to the community, which I understand because there's a lot of nostalgia tied to when they were in school and the activities that they did around Valentine's Day. And so I was very open to the feedback. Everybody that reached out to me, I responded to. I explained, "I'm happy to sit and meet with you." I also had a lot of families that said, "Thank you. This is great. I'm so glad that we've made some changes to this." I don't know. So let's, I mean, we just had it. So our staff did them. We're going to sit and kind of go through the feedback that we received and see if we think that there should be an adjustment for next year, maybe there will be. I don't know. But I felt comfortable going forward because the intention of it was to make sure that all kids could participate in a school activity. It's very difficult to say the school is sponsoring an activity that not all kids can participate in. That doesn't, it doesn't sit right. So I felt good, I still feel good, that that's the call that we made. That doesn't mean that we don't monitor and adjust because maybe there's something that we missed, and you always have to be open to that in the feedback. But it's been challenging, you know, because you want everyone to feel excited about what you're doing at your school. And so, you know, we'll work through it and see. But anytime that you're doing those decisions, it's like bringing along people, making sure you explain why, making sure that you're talking to people that have questions about what's going on. And the core value of, "I want to make sure that all kids at our school get to do the things that the school is putting on," is really important. So we'll see. Thank you.
I have the next question.
Okay.
What strategies would you use to ensure that students who are high achieving academically are adequately challenged while also supporting students who may be struggling academically?
It's a really good question. It's at the heart of multi-tiered systems of support for academics. So when you're going through, in professional learning communities, there's kind of these four questions that you always address, all types of learning. The first one is, "What do you want students to know?" And then it becomes, "What do you do when they already know it? What do you do when they don't?" And then like, "How do we respond and how do we move on and go through the next piece?" So both, whether it's intervention or an extension, they carry kind of equal value because kids were human beings and we learn things at different speeds and paces. And so when we are giving a first instructional go, that goes back to the data, it's really important to know, "I've given this lesson, I have kids who now have learned it and are ready to move on, or I have kids who might need additional support." And it's something that did come up when I was here on Friday with some of the staff members of talking about the schedule, the master's schedule, and figuring out where do we have time to help either extend kids or to do extra support for kids. And right now, it sounds like, and I don't know, but it sounds like that is an area of challenge of not being able to find that in the schedule. And so it's something that I have learned masterfully from elementary teachers, and it's because they have the kids all day, all year in the class. And so you can build in times a little bit easier than you can on a secondary schedule, but that's not impossible. There's a lot of schools that do it really well. And so it's figuring out that time because we are equally responsible to grow kids. What's the point of having a kid sit in a course where they know the material? I mean, there should be some sort of extension. And for teachers, they need the help and the support of knowing how to do an extension. A lot of, my experience is, a lot of educators do a really nice job of building back and figuring out the scaffolds. And sometimes it's that extra push and extension that can be challenging. And so it's our responsibility to make sure that they feel adequately prepared to do that. It's not just more, you don't just double up all the coursework or something. It's not extra work. It's a deeper level of thinking and independence and how to process that information. And there's a lot of great tools out there so that you are not rooting out your staff on trying to figure that out. But there's a lot of really good resources and tools. And so to me, when I was meeting with the staff, that's something that they've, my feeling was that they felt excited about exploring because I think they understood that that's a need.
Thank you.
And I have the next question. After three years in the job, what would success look like for you?
Hmm, three years on the job. Well, for me personally, I hope that I'd still like it. I like coming to work every day. That feels successful, which I always have. This is 19 years. I love coming to work. I like, school's the best place to be. It's so fun. I think for kids, the same, like, they feel joy coming to school, they're proud of their school, they're actively involved in the offerings of the school. The staff, that's really big, especially nationwide. There's teacher shortage, you read about it all over the place. If we are fully staffed, teachers are happy, they're working together collaboratively, that would feel very successful to me. It's a really challenging job, and teachers can't be working in silos. So building in systems where they are relying on each other and it's a cooperative kind of environment would be awesome. And then I would, when I was a teacher, we set a school goal to make sure that at least two-thirds of students were either involved in a club or an athletic or something else, and that that is directly tied to student achievement and lower disciplinary problems. So I'd like to see a lot of kids involved in a lot of things, and I'd like to see great data. I want to see that we're making gains. And I think that we would have, in three years from now, we should probably have like a very well-established plan and roadmap of where we want to go each year so that we're making progress and indicators along that pathway. And I do believe in constant cycles of improvement. There's always something you could be doing better. So it would be people who say, like, "We're really crushing it. Look at all these great things we're doing, and I still think we could do a little more." And having people that come with that mentality of like, "What's the next step?" To always kind of stay sharp and on top of it, and that that's like a collective spirit would feel really good.
Thank you. Great. I got another question for you.
Okay.
So throughout all this whole process, what have you learned about Exeter High School that excites you about the job?
Hmm. I, so not being native to this area, I think there is something, when I go out and I'm meeting other educators and I say that I work for SAU16, it carries weight, which I didn't realize prior to working here. And so I think that speaks to the excellence that has already been established. There's like a very good reputation, and to be a part of maintaining that and growing that is really exciting. And I believe, especially since my own children will be coming, I have one here and one that's coming here, I think that there's, like, if it wouldn't be good enough for my own kids, it's not good enough for anyone's kid. And so that's where I'm at. You know, my kids are coming through here. I want them to have a wonderful experience. I fully trust everybody in the system to help guide my kids, what's the coursework, if they need help. There's, it's an established learning institution that I already have full trust in, and that's, doesn't happen everywhere. It's like a very unique thing. And so to know that, like, I entrust my own kids to be coming through and that I could be a part of that responsibility for other families who are sending their kids and expecting high things, like, it's a big responsibility and something that I think is very exciting. I also think that there's, like, I was at the joint board meeting, and there was a lot of people that turned out. There's a good community investment in the school and what they wish to happen. And I have been in other buildings where families, of course, love their kids just as much, but because of different circumstances and environments and whatever, could not be as involved in the school as I see here. And so I think there's kind of like an untapped resource of how do we channel that? That also came up with some of the staff that I met with on Friday of talking about, where is the community engagement, not just coming to athletic events, but are there other opportunities that we could open up where families could come and feel like they're having a part and a say in this? So that feels exciting to me in this area where the schools are a main hub of activity. And it just feels like there's a lot that could be done that feels really exciting that I've been brainstorming on.
Can I have a follow-up to that?
Sure.
Since you've experienced education in other corners of our country,
Mm-hmm.
What could you bring to Exeter High School?
Well, I worked with very diverse populations, and I feel very fortunate that I had some of those experiences to work with. And very large schools, so the high schools that, in my past district, had anywhere between about 2,000, 2,500 kids. So they're large schools. I built strong relationships with kids and families in all of those systems. As an administrator, I have worked with some of those families, have learned a lot, gained a lot more perspective and empathy for families that I work with. I think even being at Exeter in this community, at Exeter Elementary, I have worked, there's a wide variety of families and needs. And so I think that my different experiences, they bring different perspectives that people who maybe are just here just don't have the opportunity to have. You know, there's been a different way of doing things. When I came, even just some of the systems and structures have been a little bit different. It's been nice to be able to put kind of my own spin on some things. And I've also learned a lot being here. You know, there's just different ways of doing things, and so it makes me feel like I'm a more dynamic leader because I did have some of those other experiences and places And so it makes me feel like I'm a more dynamic leader because I did have some of those other experiences and, and places to bring them here.
Great. Other questions? Yeah, well, just to pause for, just raise your hand, Tammy, if you have anything, anybody else? All right, I have another question. All right. So I imagine that's the last day of school.
Okay.
And the sixth grade parents are standing around and they've been asked to tell a story. What story would they tell?
Oh, my gosh. I don't even, probably so many. I, I really like to have fun at school. And we have to have fun because they're very hard jobs. And I think the kids feed off of that energy, so you have to be bringing it every day and be on your A-game. I'm not afraid to do funny things. I, I have sang in faculty follies where it's like our staff puts on skirts for kids and they come and we do a variety show. I've performed in many of them. I have been in dunk tanks. I have done, I'm getting ready to be in a silly string contest with some kids that won something at my school. I've been gooped with goo, I mean, all sorts of things. I'm always down for a giggle and an experience at a school. So I imagine it would be something like that. And I like to be seen and be around. I like interacting with the kids. So I'm sure there would be just stories of daily interactions of walking through the cafeteria, sitting down at the table and visiting and asking what's going on at the weekend. I attended a conference not that long ago, just a couple of weeks ago. And there were some high school students that started a podcast at their school. I thought, that is so cool. There's really neat stories of kids. There was a young lady that came in that was from an immigrant family and she was talking about her experience coming and going through, through their schools in Concord. And it just felt like that stuff that I would like to start and be a part of, of helping kids just, who they are, what their stories are, have fun, create memories. I, I actually have stayed in contact with a lot of former students that I have. I'm sure they would share lots of very interesting stories. But, you know, even when I was a teacher, like converting my classroom into a coffee house. And we did slam poetry and we played music. And I think there's, it's just creating those memories and experiences with kids and enjoying them.
That's great. Fun. I, I can see that. You like to smile. You like to...
I do, yes.
I like that. All right. Anything else?
No.
Tonya, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Anything you want to say as parting ways?
I mean, I just, going back to the question about Exeter and just thinking, what it has taught me in working, you know, just interacting with the kids the other day and thinking about what I would like to bring to it. I just, education is such a, a powerful place to help kids gain dignity and perspective and power and voice. And so that is already established here, which is really cool. And so I think that it would be very exciting to build on that and to kind of put my spin on that and to work with the other talented people in this building to make that happen. For not just my own kids who are coming through, but lots of kids down the road in this community. And to continue to build like that legacy and that reputation. And so I just appreciate the process. It's been really neat. It's been informative. Even though I've been in Exeter, to know exactly the goings-on of the high school is different than the world that I've been in. And so I appreciate everyone's transparency and openness in our conversations throughout it. So if anybody is listening, I appreciate the time and dedication that they, they took out of their day to explain things to us and what their hopes and wishes were. Because anybody that comes into this position, it has to feel like it's a good match for us too. You know, it feels like I want to be able, if I were to accept a position, it would have to be because I also feel like I'm going to be offering something that there might be a need for and that it would be reciprocated, that I would be able to grow. And so I just, I think that's important. And after having the conversations with the kids and the staff, I do feel like there's an opportunity there that is exciting. So I appreciate it.
Oh, great. Well, thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it. It's been nice to get to know you.
Nice to get to know you guys too.
Thanks.
Good to see you. Thank you. With motion to go into non-public?
Great.
Second.
All right, great. So all those, and what, let's go around and do a roll call?
Yes. Amy Ransome, yes.
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you.
Tammy?
Tammy?
Aye. It's on the board, up in the corner, right here.
Are we good?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Excellent. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any, well, let's do a roll call.
Aye.
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 Great. Thank you. Any other business? Any other business for tonight?
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.